Good evening and welcome to the May 12, 2020 Gilderlin Central School District Board of Education Meeting. Would you all please silence your cell phone and recite the pledge? The pledge will include the United States of America. For which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just confirming here, we don't have any public comment, correct? First, on the agenda, budget update and discussion. I think that's Dr. Wildes and Neil.
Okay, in a moment here, I will attempt my technical wizardry and share the screen. We have a brief PowerPoint to provide an update on the budget and the voting process now that we have some clarity on what our expectations are. And so let me work on getting that PowerPoint up. Can you all see it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I think I have arrived from the technological world. Okay, so Neil, I'm going to turn things over to you and I will try to be a good slide advancer for you.
Okay, thanks, Marie. I'd like to preface this by saying this budget vote or election is going to be much different than what you've experienced in any other year that we've held a vote in an election. So we want to go and walk through this process with everyone and share with our community how the process will work and how it will be different. And we have a number of slides that we'll walk through detailing the process and how that'll work. So first thing that we have to realize is as a result of the pandemic, the governor has changed the voting process. So first, he delayed the voting process and then he went back and finally changed the law because this is all the process for voting is all established in law. He issued an executive order and it was number 202.26. Now, I'll walk through some of the changes that were outlined in the order. Normally, we as a school district have to provide four legal notices in advance of the budget vote and election. That was reduced from four to two and that's because we're starting much later in the process than we normally would otherwise with a may vote and now we're into a June vote. The vote is only to be conducted by absentee ballot, so there is no in-person voting as would be typical. Everything has to be done by absentee ballot and mailed in. The content of how this will work will be described in a postcard and that postcard will be sent out to every resident in the district. It details the date of the election, the date of the budget hearing, and a definition of a qualified voter. So in this case, all qualified voters, and we'll describe what that term means shortly, will receive an absentee ballot with a postage-paid return envelope. So that ballot will be mailed to every qualified voter and also included will be returned postage for mailing it back. Also on the ballot, which will be contained in the envelope, all the board and library trustee candidates will be listed, but they'll be listed alphabetically. In the past, they have drawn for positions. So that process isn't happening this year. And also, any candidates for those positions do not have to collect the required number of signatures, which has always been part of the process in the past. If you were running for a board or library seat, you had to collect a certain number of signatures to be placed on a ballot. That provision was waived for this upcoming vote and election. So the big question is, what is a qualified voter? And this will vary from school district to school district depending on how they're structured. In the Gilderlin Central School District, the voters adopted a system quite some time ago that's based on what's called personal registration. So in order to be able to qualify to vote on a school budget for board and library trustee candidates, you have to meet certain criteria. You have to be a US citizen. You have to be at least 18 years of age. You have to be a resident of the school district for at least 30 days prior to the vote. And you have to be registered to vote with Albany County Board of Elections or the school district. And that's the difference for us. You have to be registered with Albany County or the school district in order to be considered a qualified voter and receive a ballot. If you're not registered to vote, there is still time to do so, but you cannot do that at the school district, which you've been able to do in the past. It has to be through the Albany County Board of Elections by mail or you can also register remotely through the New York State Department of Motor Vehicles and the web address is shown. You can also go to the Department of Motor Vehicles website and on their page, there is information about how to do that right on their website. So to give you the timeline, again, we're not voting in May. We're voting in June. The timeline for moving forward from this point, yesterday, any nominations for board or trustee candidates had to be filed with the district clerk, so that date has passed. At the end of this week, May 15, postcards with voting information will be mailed to all district households. So you can expect a postcard sometime next week and it will provide much of the information that I'm sharing in the presentation this evening. On May 18, the board will be adopting a budget. So next Monday, that will occur. On May 22, the school district group is required to file what's called a property tax report card to the New York State Education Department, so we will be doing that. On May 26, that's when the absentee ballots will be mailed to qualified voters. And again, those are only voters that have either been registered with Albany County or with the school district. Those are the only individuals that will receive a ballot. So if you currently are not a registered voter, even though you may have received a postcard at home, you still will not receive a ballot unless you're registered with Albany County or the school district. And we are still saying that date is tentative. There's a lot of work. And this is a date we're seeking to hit in terms of when that absentee ballot will actually be mailed. Also, on May 26, we will be conducting a budget hearing. Again, that will be, as it is this evening, via video conferencing where we'll be sharing details of the budget that's being asked to be voted on. Following day, May 27, we will have a budget notice and budget newsletter mailed to district households. That should be arriving the following week. And then on June 9 is the actual budget vote and election day. And absentee ballots, again, that's the only way you can vote. They must be received no later than 5:00 PM to be counted. And these are all laws of New York State. These are not requirements that we're making up. But on that day, you will not come and vote in person at any location. You will need to have your absentee ballot returned by mail no later than 5:00 PM. We are looking at an option to have a drop box available at the district office prior to the vote and the day of the vote up until 5 o'clock where people can come and drop off a ballot if they so desire. And then normally, on the day of the vote, we would have the vote tally by the end of the evening. We, because we're starting, we can't start counting until after 5:00 PM. We will start the counting the following day. Most school districts are electing to do that. Depending on the number of ballots we receive, and that's the big question now because we're mailing them out. We don't know how many we're going to get back, but it could take a day or two or three days to process all of the ballots. They have to be done manually. We don't have scanning machines and machine-readable ballots from Albany County. We will be hand-opening them and manually counting them and recording the results that way. So that will take some time to go through. And as soon as we know the results of the election, we will certainly be posting those results. So that concludes the timeline. And now we'll talk a little bit about some of the budget work that's been continuing since our last meeting where we discussed budget and that was on April 28. So during that time, we have continued to review the budget. We have new information, updated information that has changed some of our budget estimates and we're sharing those with you this evening. So in terms of a music teacher, we are continuing to redo, review our staffing needs, review again of our elementary music. We have not only music classes, but we have instrument lessons. So it is a little more complex in terms of how many students take an instrument and the different types of instruments and how we allocate staffing. But review of that shows that we can do with a tenth less of a teacher and that's paid $6,800. In terms of administrative salaries, we have two open administrative positions. We have we have two open administrative positions or replacement positions, I should say. So our administrative or Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources is retiring and that position is being replaced by our Director of Physical Education and Athletics. So that results in that position being opened and the change in salaries from those two openings results in savings of $39,070. We have an increase of $1,000 in our Data Privacy Officer stipend. Review of those duties and responsibilities. This is a new position we're required to have and we're continuing to look at the duties and responsibilities. We want to make sure that the stipend adequately compensates for those duties and responsibilities. Also, we have a Records Manager stipend. We had a reduction in the budget of a part-time, half-time clerical position in Human Resources. There is a need now to have somebody dedicated to the role of Records Manager. That position that we reduced handled that aspect. We now feel we need to have somebody overseeing that work, so that would be an addition of $6,000. In terms of the mental health clinic, we had an estimate of what we thought that would cost. We have received final pricing for having the mental health clinic and it's an addition of $4,500 above what we had estimated. Remedial summer school, we still don't know what summer school is going to look like, but we do think that we will have some form of remedial summer school for students this summer. It may be remote rather than in person, but we also looked at option. In the past, we've used BOSIS to, we participated with BOSIS in remedial summer school. We believe this year we might be better served by doing, providing summer school in-house and if so, we would save $2,995. Next, we also looked at some of our technology needs and Damian Singleton brought forward an option to lease computers rather than purchase, which was the original plan and the development of the budget. If we leased them rather than purchased them outright, we would save $18,000. We're looking at that option. Capital project professional services fees. We have had some conversation with our Business Practices Committee. With this ongoing capital project that we have, that there's still some facilities needs out there that could tie into some of this work in the last year of the project. And the committee felt that maybe we should have some money available for professional service fees, architectural and construction management services to help design that work and evaluate that work. It might be helpful and we might be able to have some savings if we were able to do that within the overall project at the end where we already have contractors on site. Was originally 25,000. We reduced that by half to 12,500. And then also, if you saw the last meeting, we are moving forward with some debt refinancing with low interest rates. Our current estimate, we haven't finalized the refinancing process yet, is that we will save $20,233 going into next year by refinancing those obligations. So in total, the adjustments that we're looking at, so reduction in staffing of just a tenth of an FTE, but with all the other items that we have listed, it's an overall reduction of $88,098. And then finally, we actually have been looking at how we're going to end the year financially and we discussed this at the last meeting as well, based on the period of school closure and having some savings resulting from that. We don't, we haven't hired substitutes. We haven't utilized our buildings in the same way, so we're saving on utilities, gas and electric. We're not driving our buses, so we're saving on bus fuel and also as a result, we're not driving those buses. We're saving on repairs. So we do have a number of areas that we're saving in. And our estimate was that if we closed through the remainder of the year, and we now know that is the case, that it would be close to $1.4 million to the good at the end of this year in terms of overall revenue and expenses. We haven't finished the year yet, so that's why it's to be determined. But that number should be somewhere around that $1.4 million, which will give us additional resources going into next year's budget on the revenue side to help offset some of those expenditures. And with that, we'd like to open it up at this time for any questions or discussions the board may have.
Neil, I just have a quick question about the Data Privacy Officer. That's required by the state, right? Originally, didn't we have it as a full-time position? Or at least it was listed as $30,000, right? So this $1,000 stipend suffices?
This is an adjustment to the stipend. I'll let Damian speak to the Data Privacy Officer piece.
Hi, Seema. So yes, this is a requirement now by the state. It is a mandate. And going back to the very early draft of the budget, it was actually proposed as a .5 FTE originally. But then when we started to get some clarity around the financial picture going forward to next year and started to engage in conversations about how we could further reduce, we basically shifted to a stipended approach. And originally, we looked at the stipend as being a $6,000 stipend comparable to the Records Management stipend. Since then, because we have someone who is essentially doing the job right now, and that's Natalia Lemoine, we've been analyzing the amount of time that she's putting forward, some of the job responsibilities and requirements, and felt that a $7,000 stipend would be more appropriate. Therefore, there's the $1,000 increase in stipend.
Thank you.
Neil, in anticipation of whenever we adopt this budget, can you take one of the draft budget packets, the yellow cover, and send that out to all of us?
Yes, we will be doing that with, for the next meeting, we'll have all of that information prepared.
Okay, because there's been a couple iterations of the budget, you know, so.
Yes, we want to make sure we're all looking at the same document.
Neil, I don't know if this is the time to discuss the position for the gymnastics assistant or later in the meeting, but I would hope that the board would really think about putting that position back in for a number of reasons. It's basically a female sport. It would be very hard for that small contingent of people to, you know, carry forth, you know, with higher fees and things. So if we could at least put that up for consideration, I certainly would appreciate it.
Duly noted, Barbara.
Thank you, Neil.
Okay, thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the consent agenda. This is the minutes from the April 28 board meeting, the PSC and CSC recommendations, the personnel action from May 12, textbook, one textbook, and financials from February 29 and March 31. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So, Barb? A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, information items, curriculum and instruction. Dr. Singleton?
Thank you, Seema. I want to start with a bit of follow-up information from an update that I provided during the last board meeting regarding Gilderlin teacher and leader participation in a project led by Capitol Regent BOSIS. Unfortunately, when I reported last time, I was working from an incomplete list. So I want to make sure that I acknowledge and recognize some additional teachers who participated in that project. And their names are Deb Boyce, Stacy Haas, Elizabeth Howerton, Nicole Kaya, Stephanie Kozier, Mark Cotteri, Alicia McTirrenan, Carrie Miller, Rachel Pachere, Colleen Petroff, and Sue Patoriti. And again, the link to the product of their work is there for you as well. And again, I thank them and I do apologize for the omission from the last board meeting. And my second is just a bit of sharing with you. The Schenectady Daily Gazette ran an article recently and interviewed FMS Technology teacher Max Corbett, highlighting his 3D printing skills while he was producing face shields. And since the article ran, some of the data is becoming dated actually, as they have delivered over 7,000 face shields as of now. They did refer to FMS and what they do as teachers and I have the link to the Daily Gazette article there for you as well. And I would be remiss if I did not also recognize Mr. Corbett for his YouTube site. He's producing some amazing, exciting, engaging videos for students as they are working from home. So thank you, Mr. Corbett. And lastly, some student recognition. Please join me in congratulating two of Gilderlin High School's 10th grade students. They are Claire Riley and Regan Roberts, whose play, The Deadly Dinner Party, has been selected as one of the six winning scripts from the Capitol Repertory Theater's Sixth Annual Young Playwright Contest. I would also like to commend Ms. Diane Garin for her encouragement and support of the young aspiring writers. The Deadly Dinner Party, along with the five other plays that have won the contest, will receive a virtual reading as part of the Rep's Ninth Annual Next Act New Play Summit in the New Voices event. The summit will take place between June 5 and 8 of 2020. And again, congratulations to Claire and to Regan for their great work.
Thank you, Damian. Next, the consent information. Dr. Wild?
Okay, thank you. I am so pleased that my first item here is to recognize our very own Dr. Seema Rivera, who has recently been appointed to the Reimagine Education Advisory Council. This is a council established by Governor Cuomo himself. And so Seema will be representing board members everywhere, but also Gilderlin as well. So congratulations, Seema. We're so proud. So to have you on our team and representing the good work we do here and on behalf of children. And it's an esteemed list of people that you are part of. I'm just going to read through the list here. It's Koita Adams, who's the Superintendent of Albany City, Jamie Alicia, who's the Superintendent of Syracuse City, Joni Arnold, who's the founder of the Dance Educator Laboratory, Melanie Baker, Director of Education, United Way of Buffalo, Kyle Belakopinski, who's the Executive Director of New York State PTA, Meg Banky, Provost of SUNY Empire State College, Jackie Burbridge, parent from Suffolk County, Katie Campos, who's a partner with Strategic Collective, Anthony Collins, who's the President of Clarkson College, Stephanie Conklin, who's a master teacher from South Colony, George Dermody, who's the CEO of the Children Home of Wyoming Conference, Carol Mason, who's President of John Jay College of Criminal Justice, Austin Ostrow, President of SUNY Student Assembly, Martin Palermo, who's a master teacher from the Floyd School District, Roger Ramesami, who's President of Hudson Valley Community College, our own Seema Rivera, Shannon Tahoe, our interim commissioner, Dennis Walcott, who's a former chancellor of the New York State Education Department, and Randy Weingarten, President of American Federation of Teachers. So you've got just a blockbuster group of people who have the daunting task of reimagining our work. So we can't wait to hear more. Anything you'd like to share or? How did this happen? Do you know?
Um, I don't really know how it happened. Someone reached out to me from the state and I think because of obviously volunteering in Gilderlin and my job working in education and I think being a parent also of younger elementary students, they thought I might fit the role and asked if I was interested. So I said yes, but I'm not really sure what I signed on for. Got much more detail after that, but I'll be sure to ask. And Ms. has reached out to and offered their resources, which I'm grateful for. So thank you, Dr. Wild.
That's great. Congratulations. So I have one other item today and this is an idea for the board to think about, not to act on quite yet. We are reflecting on the uncertainty of what the opening of school will look like in fall of 2020. And so I will give Damian credit for this idea to rethink our calendar just a little bit to give us some more time with our faculty and staff before students arrive, I hope, on September 8. So we're proposing moving the March 15 Superintendent's Conference Day in 2021 to the front of the year, to September 1, to give us three days before students arrive to do additional preparation, additional training. And honestly, we're not even sure what else we may need to do, but we want to have ample time so when our students return, we are ready. So that would give us three conference days before the start of school and one more on election day and that would be it for the school year. In making this move, it adds a day of instruction to March, which put us to 182 days of instruction plus the four conference days put us at 186, which is one too many under our contractual agreement with our Teachers Association. So this proposed calendar suggests adding December 23 to our December break. And that evens everything out. So that's the idea. I've talked with our leadership team. I've talked with the Teachers Association. Just seeking your input for now.
Marie, how was the 23rd chosen? Was it just, just figured it was a good place to put it?
The only other day we looked at was the Friday before Memorial Day and then creating the contingent holiday and the Thursday before the Friday. And ultimately walked away from that because that's the potential of five consecutive days off right at the end of May when students are gearing up for Regents exams and it's just really hard to have five days off when the weather's great and come back and finish strong. So we moved it to December. There really weren't any other obvious options.
Okay.
So this will come back to the board next time we're together for action and then we'll share it out. We're assuming this will have minimal impact on families, which was a big priority. You don't want to disrupt families any more than we already have. So thank you. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Wild. Next, Board President information. Three items. The first is the upcoming Board of Education election. The deadline for the Board of Ed candidates to turn their self-nominations was yesterday, May 11. I'll read this for information purposes. There are three three-year terms on the board that begin July 1 and two one-year plus three-week terms on the board that begin June 30, 2020. The names of the candidates will appear alphabetically on the ballot. Candidates do not run for a specific seat on the board. The individuals with the five highest vote totals will be elected. The candidates with the lowest total votes will serve for each of the one-year terms of the office and will begin their term on June 10, 2020. Three-year terms will run from July 1, 2020 to June 2023. The one-year terms will run from June 10, 2020, June 30, 2021. Next on the agenda is the voter registration required. Neil talked about this at the beginning. So the public vote for the school budget and the Board of Education will be held on Tuesday, June 9, 2020. In this situation, we'll all be using absentee ballots to vote and you may register using the, if you're registered, then you will receive a postcard from the district. The district will be sending out a postcard to the voters, the registered voters in the district on how to vote starting this Friday. So the district will give out information for that. Linda, you're shaking your head no. Linda, you're shaking your head no.
The postcards are going out to all households.
All the households, thank you. Okay, so the postcards are going out to the whole, all the households. The district will send out ballots to all the qualified voters. Linda. And then the last item is the proposed change for the Board of Education meeting date. We will consider moving the regular scheduled vote from June 9th to June 16th. That way, the budget vote and election can take place on June 9th, which was chained via executive order on May 1st, 2020. Any questions? All right, next on the agenda, action items, school business management, Neil.
I tried to get my mute button off. Thank you, Seema. First item this evening is the consulting agreement. And resolution is to approve the agreement with Needham Risk Management Resource Group to provide consultant services for Health, Safety and Risk Management Services effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021.
Can I have a motion to approve the risk management agreement?
So moved. Second.
Back to Gloria. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass the seven zero.
Thank you. Next item is an agreement, is an addendum to the agreement with the YMCA for classroom rental, and it pertains to the fourth quarter of the current school year. Since our schools have been closed since March 13th, the Y who rents space in three buildings, three elementary buildings, Pine Bush, Westmere and Gilderland Elementary, they have been unable to have their after-school childcare programs. So we've been working with the Y, and the resolution that we've come up with is for the fourth quarter, we would reduce that by 50%. So that's what the addendum refers to.
Have a motion to approve the addendum with the Y.
So moved.
Ben?
Second.
Back to Gloria. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Pass the seven zero.
And then finally, this evening, we have another donation, which is just great. It's for 50 disposable safety masks, and it's from Amy and Mike Bibbo. So we're very appreciative of that donation.
Can I have a motion to approve the masks?
So moved. Yep.
Judy, sorry, and second, is that Kelly?
Sure.
Aye.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Just thank you to Mike and Amy Bibbo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass the seven zero. Next on the agenda, board committee reports, let's start with business practices.
We haven't met, and I don't believe we have a meeting scheduled.
Thank you. What about communications?
We have not met since the last board meeting. Our next meeting is scheduled for May 20th at 8:00 AM.
Oh. Thank you, Ben.
Okay.
Next, policy.
We did meet, but we will continue the work that we started on May 27th at 3:00.
Barb, and lastly, the audit committee.
We have not met, and we do not have a meeting scheduled at this time.
I have a comment number two. Then board issues, ideas and sharing. Does anybody have any ideas or issues they want to share? Okay, so last, the motion to adjourn.
Seema, before we do, I just want to highlight the date for the budget adaption had originally been a week from today on May 19th, but we need to move it up to Monday, May 18th, so we can turn around everything to get our ballots out. So we just want to make sure that everyone was available and that that would work, and we can plan accordingly.
We don't have a meeting on the 19th, correct?
And then no meeting on the 19th, and yes, 7:00.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments in the chair? Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Barb?
Second.
Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass the seven zero. Thank you.